Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the, uh, the Planning Commission. I'm Steve Campbell. He's at the, uh, history. Um, let me roll call, please, Steve.
Commissioner Fager.
Here.
Commissioner Rossman. Commissioner Hahnle.
President.
Commissioner Hayward.
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Burton.
Here.
Chairman Jack Shaw.
President. We have, uh, a pledge of allegiance, please. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have, uh, item number two, the public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on anything that is on the agenda? We can consider it, please. So, so, now, just joining up the podium. Uh, go on to, uh, number four, is the housing element. The presentation by, uh, Denise Duffy and Associates. Go ahead, by, uh, President.
All right, is this on? Yeah, okay, great. Okay, thank you, Planning Commission, for listening to me today. I'm going to present to you your preliminary draft housing element. Uh, we presented this to the city council last week, um, and we incorporated their comments. Now, we're here today to vote to approve, um, sending the draft, the preliminary draft housing element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. That's what I'll refer to that as throughout the rest of this presentation. My name is Ashley Quackenbush. Um, I'm an associate planner at Denise Duffy and Associates. I've been working on this housing element for a while now, and then I also have my colleague here, Connor O'Toole. He's also a planner at DDNA, and he will assist me with answering any of your comments or questions later on. Okay. So, here's our agenda for the day. Um, we'll quickly go over a brief history of Delray Oaks and their housing element. We'll go over the components required under, um, state law for a housing element. Then I'll give you a high-level overview of what's contained within your housing element right now. We have a lot to cover today, so I'll just ask you to hold your questions and comments till the end. Okay, here's the historical overview of Delray Oaks' housing element. In the 1990s, we, uh, Delray Oaks adopted a housing element and incorporated into their general plan and approved their general plan. In the early 2000s, Delray Oaks started a, um, draft update to their housing element. But as issues with former four doors started to come up and development questions were coming up, they decided to, we, Delray Oaks decided to hold on approving that housing element. In 2017, the Planning Commission conducted annual review of their general plan policies. This included, um, a review of the housing element policies and programs. Today, we have before you an updated, um, preliminary draft general plan housing element. A lot of those, um, 2000 policies have rolled over into this new element. Uh, we've just kind of spruced them up to be more, um, applicable to current state law. Our goal right now is to adopt a housing element in 2019. So here's the components of a housing element that are required by state law. We have an existing needs analysis. This existing needs analysis is going to go over things such as households overpaying, um, for housing, or people living in overcrowded conditions. It's also going to identify special needs groups, um, such as the elderly or homeless. There'll also be a projected needs analysis within the housing element. Um, the projected needs analysis is actually provided to you by HCD, and it contains a regional need, housing needs assessment, um, RHNA, and I will go over what your regional needs assessment allocation is later in the presentation. Um, a housing element by state law is required to have a site inventory analysis. That is a detailed land analysis, um, and it identifies parcels within the community that are suitable for development to meet that projected needs analysis. Lastly, based on those needs that we found, we developed goals, policies, programs, and measurable objectives. That's very important that they're measurable, which essentially become the list of items that the Delray Oaks will be working towards to ensure the city's needs, housing needs are met now and into the future. Okay, let's take a look at your community. So, we pulled a lot of data together. We looked at 2010 census data and AMBAG regional growth forecasts, and we found a lot of, um, interesting things for your community. First off, population, we found that Delray Oaks has a growing population. We're gonna, we have a projected 63% increase by 2030. Obviously, a growing population has implications for housing needs. AMBAG also, um, also projects that Delray Oaks has an elderly population. Um, most of the people in Delray Oaks are aging, and, um, majority of them own their homes. This has implications for overhousing, meaning we have elderly, special needs people living in larger homes, three or four-bedroom homes with empty rooms, um, that may have limited mobility and special housing needs, and may not have the ability to take care of their homes as, as needed. AMBAG projects, um, a growth in employment in Delray Oaks, about a 20% growth in employment over the next 25 years is projected for Delray Oaks. Again, this increase in employment has implications for increase in population and thus increases in housing need. Housing stock, we found that Delray Oaks has an aging housing stock with most homes being over 30 years old. Again, this can lead to issues of blight and repair in the community, though we aren't seeing that right now in Delray Oaks. Moving forward with these older homes, there may be some issues with rehabilitation. Also, in our existing needs analysis, we identified populations within Delray Oaks that may have special needs. Some of these, uh, populations we identified for Delray Oaks is to specifically include the elderly, people with disabilities, large families, overcrowded households, single parents, and the homeless. Here we go. Now, we're at your regional housing needs allocation. This is your projected housing needs. Um, this number, these numbers are provided to you by HCD. As I said before, Delray Oaks currently is working off of a housing element from the 1990s, so we skipped this fourth cycle allocation. You'll see this fourth cycle allocation column in the middle there. That means, we're on the fifth cycle allocation right now. That means the very low and low-income units that HCD, um, allocated to Delray Oaks move into the fifth cycle. So you'll say, you'll see for very low and low income, there's a total of 41 and 29 units that, um, HCD, uh, provided as your allocation. Also, five moderate and 11 above moderate to make a total of 86 affordable housing units. That's your projected need. Okay, so here, here's kind of what I like to call the, the meat and potatoes of your housing element. This, these are the goals that you, that we have identified for Delray Oaks specifically, and I'm gonna go into each one of these. A lot of these are also required by state law. Our first goal, Goal A, is housing opportunities. In this goal, um, the city is making a commitment to facilitate a wide range of housing types to ensure an adequate supply to meet that projected need. Um, we've identified some policies within this goal. Development of underutilized sites, that's where that land inventory analysis comes in. We've found parcels that can be developed, and now we wanna look at the zoning of those areas and decide if they can be developed to meet this regional housing need. Also, a diversity of housing types to meet the cities, the city and the regional housing Goal B, affordable housing. In this goal, the city commits to providing extremely low, very low, low, and moderate, um, income housing. Um, some policies that we've identified within this goal include adoption of an inclusionary housing ordinance. Delray Oaks needs to adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance under state law. Um, also, another one is provide incentives for affordable housing. In this one, some of these incentives could look like something such as a density bonus for, to provide an incentive for developers to develop some of these affordable housing Goal C, remove constraints. This one's required by state law. In this one, Delray Oaks is, um, committing to identifying and eliminating both governmental and non-governmental constraints. Um, now, Delray Oaks already has pretty flexible development standards, and they really have a commitment to work with, um, developers or community members in entitlement process, development review, and items like that. So in this policy, we have essentially stated that Delray Oaks is committing to continuing streamlining that process. Um, reduce or eliminate non-governmental constraints. Very aware of the non-governmental constraints in, constraints in Delray Oaks and on the Monterey Peninsula. This includes, um, water availability, construction costs. In this, um, policy, we're looking to reduce, to develop programs which reduce and eliminate these types of constraints. Goal D, equal housing. This is another one that's a little self-explanatory and required under state law, but this is where those special needs groups come in, so you'll see these policies line up with those special needs groups. So, um, policy D2 there, reasonable accommodation, pretty much stating Delray Oaks is looking for design that is ADA compliant for those special needs groups with disabilities. Housing for seniors. Developing programs for seniors to be able to, um, repair and rehabilitate their homes if they are low-income or, um, don't have the ability. Four and five, family and student and single-room occupancy housing. This is just ensuring there's a mix of housing types for those increases in population that we see potentially coming down the line. And quality housing opportunities in this goal, we're essentially saying, we're essentially continuing conserving those quality housing units that we already have in Delray Oaks. Providing another, uh, policy for residential rehabilitation programs. Also, um, preserving the quality single-family housing and rental stock and sustainable housing design, reviewing projects to have water and energy-efficient, um, design. So those are your goals and your policies. And this is where we're at now. Here's our timeline. We've had input from the public. We've had two public workshops, and we've also presented in front of the council. Now, we are presenting in front of the Planning Commission today. Again, we are approving, sending this preliminary draft housing element to HCD. This is not approval of the element, this is sending it to HCD for review. Um, once it's sent to HCD, it'll have a 60-day review period. That 60-day review period set by HCD coincides with a public review period, so again, the public will have an opportunity to comment on the element. During that period, um, we at DDNA will also be conducting an environmental analysis to, um, see what types of environmental impacts your housing element may have. That's probably gonna come in the form of some type of initial study, either a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. After that 60-day period, um, HCD will issue comments. Um, and we may have some comments from the public. At that time, Delray Oaks will look at the comments and either decide to, uh, incorporate or not incorporate those comments. Then, there'll be additional public hearing, and the goal is to adopt a housing element by December 31st for the fifth cycle. HCD will issue written comments 90 days after the element is adopted. So that is a quick overview of this preliminary draft housing element, and if you have any questions, I'll take those now.
I have a question. Okay, so, uh, the regional housing needs allocation, well, first off, thank you for your presentation.
Oh, you're welcome.
Very well done. Um, that number of 86, does that incorporate the 63% increase that we're projecting, uh, by 2030? Or is that till the end of the cycle, which ends this year?
Um, that is to the end of the cycle. It's your fifth cycle allocation.
Okay. Um, then, of those, of the number 86, how many of those currently exist? Are those above and beyond anything we might have in the city?
Affordable housing in Delray Oaks?
Right.
I don't, is there affordable housing units in Delray Oaks? I don't believe that there is.
I believe that, um, Delray Oaks is supposed to have affordable, um, like, one bedroom or something.
That, that came up in, uh, some of the earlier workshops, and, like, Angela was, uh, pulling in.
Yeah.
Well, they came up, there was something in.
There is, yeah.
And it first came up, but the bottom line was, it wasn't the county's 86. I don't know all the.
Yeah, and so there is a policy, um, like I went over really quick, for, uh, an affordable housing, um, ordinance. So that's kind of the first step, is for Delray Oaks to actually adopt an ordinance for, for affordable housing, and then, um, at the same time, look at these areas that have the potential to put affordable housing on them and make sure they're zoned for higher densities, so we can do that.
Okay, so bottom line, we have to create 86 units somehow out of the areas that have been identified for development.
Um, that's, there, it's kind of a little nuanced, actually. Um, I wouldn't say that you have to, this is your allocation. Um, the housing element isn't actually a project for development. We're not saying, we're not saying we're gonna put these units here and that's what's gonna happen. This is, this is your plan. This is the planning document.
So, as, as I understand it, we can just pin up to your, uh, briefing, is it correct?
Yeah.
It's, uh, that's correct. But so, like, we happen to have a, a way to say we could do 86, but we don't necessarily have to do, do the bill.
We're, we're developing policies and programs to put into place procedures to get those 86 units. This is the planning document, to do that rezoning, to do that land inventory analysis, to understand, um, development constraints, to provide those incentives for developers. This is not requiring you to develop 86 units. This is planning for it.
Okay, so it's a goal, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that being said, then, i- is there any type of forcing function behind those 86? In other words, if we don't actually create 86 units, what could possibly happen? Or what, what is that forcing function to ensure that we at least, um, try, I guess?
Be on a plan, right? I, I'd say, question.
Yeah.
Well, um, I would say that those forces are the same forces as if, as a city you didn't adhere to your ordinances and things like that anyway. I mean, if, no one's gonna say, oh, you haven't developed 86 units within this fifth allocation. Well, I shouldn't say no one. That's, I guess the person who would force you to do it is if someone, like, sued the city or something like that.
Like the governor.
Yeah.
State of California.
If you went to apply for grant money, and they said, okay, well, is your, you know, your housing element update? Oh, yeah, it is. How are you doing? And I potentially could see where they might come back and say, how you did them on that house, you know, median, and if they're not median, they could use that as a method to maybe decide, I'm correct, I, I can see that.
Well, if you're not in compliance with a housing element, you know, that a lot of times will affect your ability to get lots of money from different areas.
You, you, we, you built a plan, we adopted, we're in line, but we don't actually build the 86. I can see where they, at some point, might come back and go, great plan, how are you doing X?
I'll just, I'll just add a cop caveat. I mean, you definitely wanna work towards those 86. As, uh, you, as a city, that's an important goal, as a city, to provide affordable housing units. You wanna work towards that number of 86. A lot of communities don't always hit those numbers.
Yeah, I could see that happen. Absolutely, we wanna make it a goal, and, and I would hope that we would move towards that, but I, I guess what I'm getting at is there's no teeth behind it, um, and I can see a lot of cities that maybe put it down as a goal and come well short of, of that goal. And is there any teeth to, to, to force them to, to get it there? Otherwise, I mean, the affordability crisis is gonna just continue and get, and get worse.
I mean, there are probably definitely nonprofits and citizen groups out there who, you know, may look at that and see potential. I mean, right now, just by adopting a housing element, putting that as a goal, you are showing that you're working towards.
Sure.
Hitting that allocation, so it would be quite hard for one of those citizens groups or nonprofits to, you know, come at you right now, but, um, I guess that's kind of the teeth is, you know, you're a city, you govern your, you have, other than state laws and stuff, but you, you need to ensure, you're the lead agency.
Sure.
Right?
Commissioner Donaldson, important, in passing, too, I'm not research what's important to planning, but sometimes in similar situations, in other areas of law, the staple said, if you don't wanna enroll, you're gonna take part, and really, you're for.
Yeah.
Okay, so that may be the, the, uh, the, uh, the.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Alex.
I think it's somewhat analogous, what's going, actually doing the housing, uh, element update at 20 years old. There's been requirements to do it.
Yeah.
Let's be honest. We're doing it now, but the governor said, if you don't do the housing element, you're not getting grant money.
Right.
The money pushed it. So I could, I'm gonna say, that would be the most logical down.
Sure, I could definitely see that.
That's a scenario you could see at some point, we don't, we don't know that, but that would be the most logical, so at some point.
And, yeah.
Talk to them at that, measure how you're asking to do it, if you're in staff.
So that number comes from the HCD, is anybody ever appealed that, uh, number that comes from that?
I haven't heard of people appealing that number, no. The number comes from, um, HCD issues the number, but they look at AMBAG projections. So it's, it's, yeah.
I hope that I agree, you know, it's a goal.
Yeah.
That's what we're looking at, it's a goal. But there's no timeline on that goal, but then, they might say, you know, 10 years from now, wait a minute, you guys haven't done a lick, whereas the, penalizing you by grants and whatever possible.
Right. And of course, very soon, so at the beginning of the year, that number will increase when we go into the sixth cycle, I'm assuming.
I believe, yeah, that it will, but, um, the number will change. Most likely, it will increase. I mean, I can't, I guess if there was a decrease in population, that number may decrease. If there was a decrease in income, median income, that number may decrease. I don't see that likely happening.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then one last question as it applies to this. Uh, the 63% increase that kinda drives a lot of the, the numbers that are there, is that specifically because of the four-door development that we're, we're, uh, seeing potentially happening in the future?
Um, I, that's an AMBAG number, um, but I would imagine so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, for all your very thorough work on, uh, comprising our preliminary, uh, housing element draft. So as I see it, uh, as you pointed out, where we are tonight, prior to any building, not building enforcement, whatnot, is that we, as a city, need to, uh, approve this for submittal.
Yep.
And in doing so, show the ability to meet these requirements without restraint, uh, fulfill all of our, uh, regional housing needs assessment numbers, um, all the policies listed herein, um, which I see us as being in a very fortunate position to do, uh, that we, we're, we're very fortunate to have, uh, versatility in the land there. We can demonstrate that through zoning and whatnot. Commissioner Donaldson, you'll concur, uh, you know, we were at the, uh, Lead California Cities Planning Commission, uh, earlier this year, and there are several cities within the, the states that, uh, have absolutely nowhere to go. They are completely built out.
Yep.
And they can only go up. So we have, uh, with ease, the ability for now to demonstrate that we can comply with state requirements and meet every element of the, uh, the draft here.
Yep.
So, it looks like we're mo, able to move forward on a positive.
I think so.
May I take a step backwards from all of this for a moment?
Yeah.
Um, who's paying for you guys to do the work you're doing right now?
Our contract is with the city, I believe.
The city of Delray Oaks, correct? So we hired you guys to do an analysis of what?
You hired us to update your housing element.
Okay. We've hired you to update our housing element, and when you.
And do environmental review of that housing element.
Good. And I, by the way, I think you guys have done some really good work here. If I don't say that a couple of times, I swear, there's good in here.
All right.
There's also things that, um, concern me. The first of which, we've been batting around a little bit, this number 86. Did you guys do an analysis of that number and how that got put together?
That number is provided to us from HCD.
Hmm. That came up in one of the earlier briefs, they gave a little more on it. I'll just say, it's a black box.
Yeah?
You know, I'm, it goes to the.
I do know. I've tried to figure it out.
And they stood out a number.
Mathematically, it looks like it's a function of primarily population changes, job opportunities, I think that's part of the deal, the 20% jobs are going up. I tried to write a function and come up with how they would figure that out, and it's a black box, of course. So here, um, to maybe ask another, um, another question about this unbelievable 86. Did it concern you that for 30 years, Delray Oaks, 30 years, only had an increase of 20% of our population? For 30 years, total increase, and yet, for the next 10 years, some organization thinks we're going to have, and their numbers are wrong, by the way, that 60, whatever that percentage is, is completely out to lunch. Someone thinks in the next 10 years, we're gonna have a 33%, so one-third of the time, yet another probably 40% more of an increase in that. Does that concern you guys at all?
In population?
To me, yes, in the population. This is one of the primary, to me, numbers inside of that black box, down inside of there. I think the population projections are what's driving those numbers behind the scenes. Um, and then, as soon as I say that, I look at the projections. We did our last housing, um, element. We did our last housing element. We published that in nineteen ninety-two. And so that tells me our number base started, I think it went ninety-two, no, it went eighty, ninety, two thousand, ten. No, it started in ninety. So at the beginning of that, when we had flat population, they told us they wanted us to do sixty, no, it's the sixty-nine, eighty, whatever the numbers are. It was a lot bigger number, the leftover from the fourth cycle, the fifty-nine. So we have no population increase during that timeframe, yet that number's huge for very low and low income housing. That concerns me. Zero population growth, yet that bigger number, which is at least twice as big as the fifth cycle allocation, where they have this, to me, an overly large expectation of how the population's gonna grow in Delray Oaks. And where are these people gonna live? I guess they're thinking that we're gonna build all this new house, that's all we're gonna do with our land is build housing, and all these people are gonna move in. I guess that's, is that where it's coming from? This gets back to my original question of, who did the analysis on that number that was handed to us?
So this number, like I said, is provided from HCD. It's required under state law. So, um.
I got you.
You would have to essentially, you know, like sue HCD over that number to change it.
Mechanism to protest that. And I know they were, this was talked at at other meetings because I saw the notes. And I don't wanna just keep beating on those numbers, but that's the key here. In my estimation, first of all, our planning commission here, we're here to watch over developments in this, in our little city and make sure they're healthy, safe for our citizens, and basically make the Delray Oaks citizens happy. That's our job. And I think as part of that, we do want to do our fair share in the community for developing low income, very low income. The lower, we do wanna provide opportunities. We do wanna pay attention to these disability things. We do definitely wanna pay attention to this elderly population because all of us are gonna be one of those guys that's selfish, right? We don't want that. But for the community, we've gotta pay attention to our older people. This is right in that regard. We got a fairly senior group that own a lot of our houses around here, and we're getting older and older. We have to pay attention to that. So with, with that as our charter, we're being driven by this behind-the-scenes number to come up, put into our general plan, this housing element that says, oh, yeah, we're willing to do eighty-nine more low-income days. And I'm not satisfied with that. That said, I think Delray Oaks, we do wanna do our part, and we wanna contribute, and we wanna take care of the bigger Monterey County state, state population. It sounds to me like there's no, no further chances for rebuttal of those, of these initial numbers in this increase, this fictitious increase in the number of jobs, twenty percent, by the way. That sounds big to me. In ten years, twenty percent, and those increases in the population. There's, is there, is there a chance for us-
This is a preliminary.
Yeah, I know it's, yeah, it's preliminary. So that, to me, there's a, there's gotta be a way to challenge what's behind that. And the reason I say all this is because the state, the county, the whomever is gonna have an expectation of little old Delray Oaks, that we do our fair share. And we, I think we wanna do our fair share. I, I think we owe it to the bigger community. That said, there's this expectation that our fair share is, we'll use that eighty-nine as a number. Our fair share is eighty-nine. I just think that the number's wrong. I think when we took on the, the number from the, from the end of the fourth, or I guess it would be the third iteration, between the third and the fourth, where they said, we expect you to have whatever it was, fifty some more, that we just accepted that in some sense. And I think those numbers are wrong. So we have, now we have a false expectation from the state level down to us, through the county, that our fair share, I think our fair share is estimated.
Does Denise, Delphi and Associates do anything with that recommendation?
With the regional housing need assessment allo, the regional housing need allocation? No, yeah, we'll definitely look into this comment, for sure. Yeah.
We, we have to.
Yeah, no, we look into all the comments.
Actually, up some kind of a while. So hopefully, that here, that training should move and that they can do something about that.
Yeah, I mean, we may very well say, not only are we willing to do eighty-nine, we're willing to do two, every unit we're gonna, we could do, we can do whatever we think is best for the health and safety and environment for the folks of Delray Oaks. We could do that. I just don't like an expectation placed on the numbers that I've seen that do not, does not, doesn't, doesn't work for me mentally. And I'm a math person, and just, I got big red, I got, you can see my notes.
Yeah, I, I do understand. The population projections, I was just looking at this, it looks like the source is from the twenty eighteen Ambig Regional Growth Forecast. So those numbers are, are fairly recent. The, the big thing with the housing element is we do have to have measurable objectives.
Yeah, I like that.
So, so, um, we should look into this number for sure. I totally agree with you on that. I do think we need to have a number.
I agree. We do. I just wanna make sure that the expectations are not disproportionate. That's, that's my, my concern. For the first half of everything that you talked about, that's my one, my one big concern is that the expectations are being set improperly. We need to investigate it. That's it.
Thank you. Not, me not being a numbers person, I appreciate that.
Thank you, David. Not really what that process, one slide that you had at the end, they're talking about what steps are gonna come next and all that kind of parrot type some of that from, and by the way, thank you, this is very comprehensive. I haven't thought about it since I didn't know. It's good stuff. And I know that there's, seems like, what I heard from the study session from Denise was that you really kinda wanna get this fifth cycle thing done this year? Are you gonna start working on the sixth cycle?
Yeah, we'll start working on the sixth cycle pretty much immediately after the fifth cycle is approved.
Right. So any of the commitments that we make in the fifth cycle, is, is there any way in, some of those things that we find that it's a, a way that we kind of maybe should've done that, is there any way to backtrack on any of those things? Or any way in amending anything we've done in previous cycle?
You mean, in the sixth cycle, housing element, changing items that we've written about in the fifth cycle?
Right.
Yeah. At that time, when you're ready to submit your sixth cycle down the line, HCD will do a whole nother sixty-day review to see if it's compliant with state law. At that, most likely at that time, there'll be new housing law that we have to incorporate as well.
So, and, you know, I, I kinda took note of some comments that Councilman Yegliot made at the study session regarding the language, and some of the language seemed very biting.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's any way to soften some of that stuff so that we don't put our little city in mind of having to do something we can't afford to do.
Yeah, let me, if I remember correctly, there was some shals in there.
Lots of shals.
Yeah. So we have, Dino did issue an errata, and that was provided to everybody, correct? Oh, okay. Well, we have an errata, so we're incorporating the comments.
That's a study session.
And we'll definitely take a look at that. And if there's any comments that need to be incorporated as well right now, we'll do that as well. So we'll provide some type of errata to the document. So if you'd like, so you can see what changes have been made. But yeah, we've been looking at those in the policies, those shals and, or it was in the programs.
Chapter seven.
Some of them are required under state law, like I said, or like Denise said, in that last, that la, in that last meeting.
And there's some of the deadlines in chapter seven, and I just wanna make sure that you kind of vetted those out, and if they're realistic deadlines, I can. Well, I have to be in the specifics of this, refresh my memory. But there's a lot of these completed by the third quarter of two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. There's some, you know, the first quarter of two thousand twenty. I just wanna make sure that those are realistic goals. And, you know, because I'm sure that those, all of those things are gonna require work and do folks.
Yeah, and I think a lot of those ones that are required by the end of twenty twenty had to do with updating zoning ordinances and codes, which will probably kind of be done, the zoning ordinance will be done in one swoop, essentially. So we'll definitely take a second look at those deadlines, for sure. But I know Denise has looked at them and Dino has looked at them, and, but we can take another look at those.
So given what, what David's talking about with that, with that number eighty-nine, in light of us wanting to research that and wanting to approve the draft element for some of the HCD, can we move forward with that tonight, given that? Or do we wait and meet again over this?
Well, there is an opportunity to incorporate comments again after the sixty-day review period. I would strongly suggest moving forward with submitting the preliminary draft to HCD. So HCD can issue their comments. For us to be able to hit that December thirty-first deadline, I'm probably gonna work on this around the clock just to be able to get it in as soon as possible. So like I said, there will be another opportunity to incorporate comments after the sixty-day public review period. And HCD will issue comments. Like I said, the chances of them not issuing a comment is very low. And Denise explained this in the last presentation, but at that point, you, Delray Oaks will have the option to either accept HCD's comments and incorporate them, or since we're going to be doing a sixth cycle housing element right away, Delray Oaks can actually opt to not incorporate the comments and approve their housing element as is, or with whatever changes, you know, in that sixty days, once we look into this regional housing need number and things like that.
But by accepting that housing need number at this point in time, are we kind of, are we making that a little more indelible? Or are we more or less condoning it at this point unless they, you know, look back and say that we've, we've had to issue with that number?
I think, my understanding of the regional housing need number is that, like, like I've said a couple of times, it's, it's a required number under state law. And if we don't adopt that number, it won't be compliant anyways. So whether you-
But if we don't necessarily build these, they're not necessarily going to be, but really, that's a limitation if you don't do your plan. So they wouldn't prove it in any way of grant, it's just all in the table.
But again, more or less, this is not to approve a plan or commitment to build X amount of units.
It's a goal.
Only to demonstrate our ability as a city.
To move forward. Yeah. So it's a, a goal. This is part of your planning document to get to that potential number.
So that is not a hard, fast number. That may be disputed at some point, so I could proclaim it's a-
And like I said, it'll probably change after December thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
HCD maybe have been off a few units, whatever other consensus was gathered, it could be give or take.
Yeah, I just, I'm, back to, I'm worried about the expectations of those outside of Delray Oaks, when we sign off on this, that we, in some sense, we endorse this, whatever the right number is. We're saying, yep. So now there, now there's an expectation. I know I'm a broken record.
I guess what you're saying is more, yes, we are gonna work towards this number.
No, we're gonna work towards being fair and doing our fair share. That's what I think our statement is. It's just we, I don't personally agree with what fair share is. That's just me personally looking at it. I, I, I can, I think I can speak for the mayor right now and say, we're gonna, Delray Oaks does what's fair.
Definitely.
Period. We will. We're not a community that will, we have values, we, we have our community. We'll, I'm, I'm a firm believer, we'll do what's right. And we'll take care of our fair share.
Is that issue, the number, something that could be clearer to find in the, the approbation language? I didn't just say this meeting here, not so much shall, but we can.
Well, maybe.
All these comments will go, are being written down. And I will have to public in periods. However, we will later on submitting this preliminary draft with comments. So hopefully, those will be massaged and looked at as far as numbers. So.
And you're never gonna have to give people that, I'm saying, so they are gonna be comments that are discussed.
So hopefully, looking at something, they'll change. Might be here something else too.
Oh, I did nothing. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking a good view of, of the-
Oh, no problem.
So, Mr. City Attorney, in reference to Chairman Jack Shaw's statements, we can assume that approval of submittal, the minutes recorded here tonight will be akin to any such conditions or be included in, as conditions of our submittal?
Having the comments that we worked into the application to HCD, I don't know that there will be conditions of this type of, I think you can approve it as not, but, but not condition. And to, to, to condition a pretty great point, that this is, you have eighty-six units, you were tasked with removing obstacles to unit two, eighty-six. No one may ever come and do a location. If someone makes kind of a five hundred, that's just mistakes. And look, looking down, help us out here, based on, you know, commissioner Burden's point on these vehicles, on these factories, we want to assume a path to enable those things. And to commission the burdens, well, if you had to guess with the same housing prices, certainly they would have had any limitations. So I think that, you know, your comment, a lot of stuff.
Again, thank your advice. It's the third time I've said, and this is a agreement. But, okay, the latest commercial letters came up, first time I've, I've heard from you, brought again from the council workshop. Is that, and it was a little unclear. It seemed to be like, oh, we're gonna, we're thinking that's, yeah, I was looking at, is that something that should be in here? Or is that something that gets addressed later in the, in the, in that sort of?
Commercial building?
Yeah, we were talking about maybe, like, you know, building on, on top of-
So we do have a, a policy in here that promotes mixed-use development.
Okay, so that kinda covers that whole, and then the specifics.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's essentially saying, you're gonna look at your zoning to incorporate some mixed use.
I, I'll make sure I, okay, good. When you do the housing, inventory, the stock analysis, was there any work? Do you even look at how many buildings might be, is that something you're looking at?
You know, Connor did actually the housing sto, the inventory analysis, so I'll defer to him on that.
Do you see any opportunities if you're looking around to bring, is that realistic at all?
You know, it's, it was, yeah, we were, I'm ready.
We don't have a lot of these things. We don't have a lot of, you know, big lot sizes. So it's really not that. Or, well, and I wasn't even talking about, yeah, I mean, this underlying all this, yeah, none of those happens around a lot. I'm just reading the map for some guys.
I think, I think the one map identified three or four properties.
Yeah, but it included what? It included like, you know, a Moore Ward, Ward, and seventeen-acre things that are, there's things that have serious usage. I, I was just I, I was just wondering about the ratings, it sounds like, yeah, it's about.
Yeah, or, we also, um, don't have a lot of these terms there, that doesn't need to see, uh, so, it makes a lot of difference.
Yeah. Right. And you mentioned earlier about what it's all about, the bigger homes. All this dumb question, but is there any way of counting, if, if a, um, double person is, starts submitting, is that, any way to count that towards ACD? Or is it gotta be physical or what?
I think so, if, um, you are able, you're able to improve, like, so they're still, like, uh, um, you're able to, you know.
Cause I know there's, it's a weak calculation, I think there's actually, um.
Yeah.
I mean, it's actually no pocket where they match up people, oh, they need a person in the house to come down, I mean, if you could go, yeah, hey, we got twenty, thirty people moving in, that's, you know, if you can count that towards our eighty-six, that's, that number is a lot smaller, we didn't have to need that.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's a possibility, yeah, okay.
Also, like, ADU units and things like that is another possibility to potentially meet that need.
Right. Okay, uh, there, this is like that, that question you've received, or the, the HCD, maybe sixty days, I don't know, there's public comment. Do people have to go through the ACD website, or how do we get more that people, they, um, still, for that sixty days?
Um, I believe, well, we'll, we'll put the housing element up on the website if it isn't already, um, and on that, up on the website, there'll be contact information on who they can provide their comments to.
I mean, I can see.
We'll also probably do a note, also with the environmental review document, we'll do some type of noticing, um, saying, you know, this is coming out.
There you go. Yeah, um, cycle six, I know it's starting at, um, four years, right, cycles of four years?
So, yeah, you're on a four-year cycle right now.
Yeah.
Once you hit two, fo, once you have two approved uni, housing elements, two, two four-year cycles, you'll go to an eight-year cycle.
Oh.
Which that's kind of the goal, is to like, get to that eight-year cycle.
You don't want to fill the ratio per.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, it's kind of, it's kind of like a loss of credations and stuff, yeah, I get it, yeah. You get the one-year accreditation, see the next January, yeah, okay, uh, so probably then the incentive's gonna be to, to get started right away. Is, is the housing element, you said something about review yearly, is that, right?
Review yearly? No, I don't believe that.
Okay, so there's no, there's no yearly requirement, so there's a four-year cycle?
Four-year.
Probably, you mean, are they?
You're on a four-year cycle right now, mm-hmm.
That might be, we're gonna fight some of these, you know, you don't like.
There's some communities that never got on the eight-year cycle, but, um, it would be great if we could get on that.
Yeah, and how many, have cities been over eight-year cycle?
What?
Our cities, right currently, only eight-year cycle, have you heard of cities made it?
Yeah, there's cities on the eight-year.
Does it do more?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, I think that, yeah, I, you know, I guess, you know, I would have, I would have, I would have, yes.
Okay, at this time.
What about questions specific to the housing element itself, is that appropriate right now, or are we gonna hit that later? Not necessarily the presentation, but, uh.
Um, let's go to, hold up real quick, to see if they have any, uh, qualifications or, uh, questions that can answer those right away. If you can come up and mention your name. For the record.
Sure. Uh, so my name is Lauren Link, I work for United Way of Monterey County on their affordable housing strategies. And so, my focus has been mostly ADUs, actually, and I've delved pretty deeply into the RENA numbers and housing months, housing elements for all of Monterey County, and so I was curious about your involvement with Ambag. Have you, have you talked with them much about Ambag? Cause in general, HCD hands down the regional assessment numbers, but Ambag's the one that allocates to jurisdictions. So they might be the ones to kind of talk to if you have issues with the numbers, um, and I've heard in the past that different jurisdictions will take more than their share, um, and so Salinas has in the past, but, and they might be getting tired of that, so. So I don't know, that's something to look into, um, and then regarding ADUs, I would be, um, curious, in the housing element, the deadline for the adopting the ordinance was like the end of two thousand twenty? And I was curious about that deadline, um, mainly because you could simply adopt state law. So I, I was curious why that would take so long to, to adopt the ordinance? And then also, to your point of, of the ADUs, um, they can be, uh, internal units, and you can count those ADUs to your RENA numbers. And so, and then moving forward with state law, you can potentially adopt a junior ADU ordinance? And so that's even smaller units that will be added to your RENA numbers as well, so you could maybe make those numbers, so, yeah. But those are just my, my comments and, so if you have any, any other questions, you, United Way's working on an ADU initiative, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, anybody else, okay, now we'll come back. Scott, do you want to open that up?
Yeah, just very quickly, on, uh, page two dash five, I, I just wanted to make sure that the employment forecast and the employment by industry takes into account the cannabis industry that we have here. So it's just something to, to, to make sure that it is incorporated, I, I think that's, uh, that's important.
Right, yeah, I'll take a look at that.
And then, um, on, uh, page four dash six, the fees, the question there is, it, are our fees consistent with other cities? Has anybody looked at that to, to, to make sure that we're not charging too much or not enough?
Um, the fees.
Um, realizing that that's a, could be potentially a good source of revenue, Alex.
Uh, if I might, to the chair, you were talking to this point, um, there may or may not be similar revenues, we can differentiate the lag that you got in this stuff based on these staff time, including, all that kind of stuff, so, or, and, well, other cities are doing, it's relevant in fact to show where we are either to why, um, capitalization, how much staff time is involved in issuing, you know, the, 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 the term, and, and the tax, some of these pieces.
Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes. Page four dash eighteen, uh, talking water, uh, do we need to put anything in there that anticipates, uh, the cease and desist order being lifted? And what we would do as a city to prioritize where that water would go, or is that, is that too early in the process?
Um, if that's something that we can look into, I think what we wrote here is, um, pretty up to date, but I can look into if there's any additional information on the CDO that we can add moving forward in the future. Let me think about that one.
Yeah, because by that constraint, um, as long as that's in place, then any growth that we have, any of these numbers that we're looking at will have to come out of the forward property, because none of the other ones you've identified are even feasible at this point because of the lack of water. So that, that's why I bring it up, it's that big of an issue with it.
I think it's like, the city attorney's saying to you, you, you don't have the water, you, you have, you're not, you're like, my, whatever it is, you don't have the water.
Right, but i- in there, there are some assumptions that are based on, um, either the current situation or projected situation which could change dramatically if that cease and desist order is lifted within the next four years or the next cycle. And that's it, thank you, Commissioner.
Doug, do you have anything to post?
Yes, I have a suggestion for you, when you asked the question about why the eighty-six is eighty-six, you know eighty-six is also a, right? Into the, into the ocean, down to the bottom, anyway, um, I, I would suggest that you say something like this. Does it make sense that over the last thirty years, we've seen a population increase of three hundred and twenty-eight people in beautiful Delray Oaks? Yet, the estimate provided for us for the next ten years is for a growth of six hundred and fifty-eight people in lovely Delray Oaks. So, does it make sense that over time, we've seen this type of growth yet, we have that, that bigger number? That's, that's my recommendation.
Okay.
How you ask that, you guys like the analysts?
Uh.
They're fun? Yeah, yeah, it is fun, that's what I do for a living, right?
Um, uh, something created too in the study session, the city manager solicited questions from the city council in writing, and I just wondered if you got any of those? And, um, you did, you know, and you can share.
Well, you said, uh, you want to visit the area?
Yeah.
Yes, that was, it's a, I, I, what, I have, I have.
Okay.
But may I jump back one more, I did on page two dash seven of the report, I just, and another thing for your arguments on these, is that on two dash, two dash seven, under vacancy rates, and I think that's also included in this, this magic black box that's happening, here, here's the statement, near the, near the, near the bottom of the vacancy rate piece. Um, there is a balance between the demand and supply, well, let's go, a vacancy rate of five percent for rental housing and two percent for ownership housing is generally considered healthy and suggests that there's a balance between demand and supply of housing, and Delray Oaks fits nicely on both of those. So that's a, another reason why, um, those higher numbers do not seem right, from a vacancy standpoint. We're healthy, and I, I, I'd love to know how they, how they categorize that. More ammunition for you.
Okay, great.
Okay, that's all for you.
Chairman, you can ask for that? Nothing for yourself, okay.
I just like, just to begin, hit what you were saying, or maybe this will say you out, so very, they, I'm just, uh, see, uh, managers, uh, I might be the same as, I think, basically, the goal of shooting managers, I think, is to send them, like, a center, a plan, because it might be a, 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 and, uh, I think it's really, you know, it's, do what we can here, and get your work started again, and we, we support this time around, one more time, and this time it's something about, you know, but, and, I mean, it's like being done now. All of the traffic is, so, you know, I think if you do the best we can, and we know, we, we will know what the fight in cycle six, what we need, you know, find ourselves, you know, three months from the deadline, four months from the deadline, and that will.
And in the end, Delray Oaks will do what's right.
Yeah.
We'll, whatever gets built, I really think will do the right thing, so that's, that's, I have no concerns with that.
Okay, I, uh, I have nothing to add, as I've already said, um, very good comments, um, maybe numbers, person, that brings up some very stuff that I never saw. But, uh, so, let's, uh, again, this is a preliminary, we have goals, there are water constraints on those goals, there's no timeline on those goals. Um, they can possibly, you know, start squeezing us with no bank money or whatever, but I think that, uh, considering this preliminary, and with our comments, public and, uh, town, uh, commission, will all be submitted and the wheels of government will continue to run away. So, with that, uh, can I get a call for the vote, uh, not a call for the vote, but, uh, I bring a lot of that motion to.
I move the, uh, improve, the preliminary draft housing element to have submitted.
Second?
No contingencies?
Yeah, I mean, the, the comments will be part of it.
Correct. That's right, comments will be part of it, yeah, and the motion, uh, to charity, uh, to submit the plan to HCD.
So I, would we, uh, approve the preliminary draft housing element, uh, and submit to HCD?
Second the motion, Paul and Feda?
Aye.
Aye. Well, she carries. Such one being you.
I'm a neg, I'm not.
Um, and on that note, um.
I'm a nay on that, on the vote.
I know we got our deadlines, but, uh, I feel like we're signing up for eighty-six, and I don't like it, and there's an expectation, so, it's, it's okay to have. Still carries?
Yes.
But I'm a neg on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
On that note, is there any, or, not, comments from the commission, uh, besides all of this?
Thanks.
Yes, thank you very much.
Pretty good job as analyst, I got plenty of tips for that, but that's a pretty nice job, this is good work, you guys don't look like you should even be out of college. Nice work, thank you.
Scott?
No.
See, it's big, man.
Uh, I will be in, uh.
You will be there.
I will be in, I'll be thinking about the figures.
Yes.
Okay, uh, meeting adjourned. Chairman, just want to, oh, my.